To June 19, 2014. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Okay, at this point I'd like to suspend the rules. Any comments from anyone in the audience regarding any other agenda items?
We'll move.
We moved in second and we suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Well, whatever. Okay, I'll go back. Okay, anyone in the audience wish to comment on any of the other agenda items? See no one?
We resume the rules.
Second. Moved in second and we resume the rules. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Gonna go back to A1 Springside, I had the date wrong. So I'd like to amend the motion to adjourn the public hearing to July...
Was it July what?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, 2014. July 17, 2014.
Second.
We moved in second and we amended to July 17, 2014 for that adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Okay, moving right along. We're going to skip down to number four. That would be C4, Poughkeepsie Plaza Facade Renovation Architectural Review. Is someone here from Poughkeepsie Plaza?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Facade renovation, this is an architectural review for exterior renovation of the Northern Plaza Building. That'd be the part on the north side. Twenty-five eighty-six to twenty-six hundred South Road Zone BSC Shopping Center, two-four acres, type-two action, Poughkeepsie Shopping Center, Inc., owner. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm J D Singh, I'm with Mori Architects and we're working with Maylich Associates who owns and operates the Poughkeepsie Plaza Mall. Rob Maylich is here tonight. So our application before the board tonight is regarding the facade renovation of a former Blockbuster space and it's the end cap at the north end of the mall and then the returning south-facing facade across Modell's and the pastry garden. So we're proposing to cover the existing Gambrel, if you call it, style wood roof that's there, the shingles, with a new Eiffel facade, stucco facade. The existing brick wall that's theirs will be painted to match the rest of the plaza. And then there'll be some decorative masonry support columns to support the Eiffel facade on the south and the west sides of the Blockbuster end cap. So then the pitched roof that returns from Blockbuster all the way into the inside corner of the mall will be covered with a standing steam metal that's, will match the rest of the plaza. And the soffits and the Modell sign background there will be finished with Eiffel.
Wow. Well, I think that's great.
Yeah.
Looks good.
It's needed it for a long time.
Yeah, that's the last part of the plaza that needs to be updated, so we're happy to get it moving and we hope you support it. The tenant that's proposed there, they're in lease negotiations, so we can't say right now who it is, but I can tell you it's a retail tenant, they're gonna occupy the entire seventy-two-hundred square feet. It's a permitted use in the zone and they'll be back before the town to review and get their signage approved when they're ready.
Okay. Is it a new, something new in town or something moving around?
Something moving.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Question, comments, anybody?
I only have a question, do you know if it's a high va- traffic volume type of tenant?
Nothing different than what's in the surrounding stores in the mall and the surrounding plazas.
It's always an issue getting in and out of it.
It's a little tight there with that traffic light and whatnot, but it's no higher volume, I think, than Blockbuster that was there before.
Okay.
What was Blockbuster?
It was an old technology.
That's why they're gone.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, just a question, is that a seven days operation for the retail or just...
Yes.
I move we accept architectural review as presented with materials included.
Second. Moved in second and we accept the architecture review, the architecture as presented with the materials and if you leave the materials board, that'd be great.
Sure.
Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
When do you expect to start?
Rob?
You gotta get a building permit, but beyond that.
Yeah. Probably, probably in the next month or two.
Good, good, good.
The board wants...
Carol.
Okay.
Okay. That was certainly quick and dirty. Okay. We're gonna move on to Fairview Commons. Secret review and recommendation to the town board regarding a proposed planned residential overlay designation and subsequent site plan and land contour permit review for construction of a hundred-and-seventy-unit apartment complex in a fifty-eight eighty-five-hundred-square-foot feet of support space. Sixty-six Fulton Avenue's owned FC Fairview Center, thirteen-point-eight-nine-five acres, unlisted action, Page Park Associates owner.
Good evening, I'm Kelly Leibert with Page Park Associates. We were before you last month, if you recall, I think it was last month, and initially presented this project to you, went over the sighting location, we did a lot of elevations, gave you kind of a flyby, a pretty significant introduction to the project. And in April, we gave you a fairly significant response to the comments that we had gotten at the planning board. Mostly, that submission include, I'm gonna say, technical comments, which were water, sewer, wetlands, SWIP-related comments, and not necessarily significant changes to the layout. So normally, I would start a presentation and say, well, we've changed this, we've changed this, we've changed this. So notwithstanding the entrance that I'll discuss in a minute, the layout has stayed fairly the same and most of the information that you've received, I will call sort of paper documentation. We provided with, you with a lot of seeker information relative to demographics and potential occupants of the site and so forth. So tonight, we were hoping to discuss, I think, two more significant issues that are before the planning board. One is the land contour change permit. And so at the end of the meeting last month, we introduced to the board that we were applying for a land contour change permit and a site plan approval, so two separate approvals. And we explained why we were doing that, it was a timing issue. And so the board asked for a submission package, a separate submission package, to address the land contour change permit. They asked for a phasing plan, asked for a phasing plan, and some information relative to the grading. So we provided that to you and I asked Rodney tonight if he would just take a few minutes to go through that phasing so you understood the logistics of the construction and how we anticipate handling that. The second item that we would like to discuss has to do with the entrances. At the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion relative to where the entrance, the primary entrance was proposed to come out on Fulton Street and it was selected for a reason because of site distance and vertical and horizontal curves. There was a lot of discussion with the conflict with the adjoining land use, which is Avello paving, so drastically different type of user, industrial user and a residential user. So the board asked that we look at an alternative location. So when Rodney's done, I'd like to just let Phil Greeley explain those two alternatives to you, so we have some larger photographs that we can show you those and hopefully we can have a dialogue with you on which location is the preferred entrance tonight.
Thanks, Kelly. Rodney Morrison, LRC Group. As Kelly described, we're pursuing concurrently land contour change permit, which we'd like to go to work on as soon as the board sees fit and we can get an approval for it. In essence, the final grading, which you see on our finished project, is we've taken that and reflected that in a rough grading over the site. And I know this particular sheet is a little complicated because it's black and white. If we wanna talk further about it, I have the individual phases by sheet here, but in essence, we've divided our site work into three phases. The intersection of the site and with that, a phase of relocating the stream corridor that's here now and connecting the existing drainage to new drainage system through there. A phase two, which is inside the site closer to West Cedar Street, and then the third phase closest to Fulton. The purpose of this bi-phase is to obviously be able to grade it and we've shown through the rules of stormwater management, erosion sediment control, how we pursue each phase. Now, what we've done to create these individual phases is we've looked at a land area, obviously we're trying, we're working to keep that under five acres. We've done a cut-and-fill balance of those areas so that we're, we've created what seem-like odd shapes potentially to you, but they are a balance, a volume of cut and a volume of fill. And that's how started to do this. It is in essence that simple. We expect to be able to do one phase, stabilize it before moving on to the next phase. And as with anything like this, we expect the town staff to be there to certify that we're good to move on to the subsequent phase. We have received the latest comments on the land contour change permit. We as a part of that submitted a full SWIP. There are a couple particular items of note, types of slope stabilization, sub-phases potentially, some relationship to the potential speed in which we can do it and the time of year which we can do it, and those are all perfectly appropriate and we can address those.
Okay, thank you.
Since the last meeting, we have developed an additional access plan and we also made modifications to the plan which had access to Fulton. So I'm gonna refer to the Fulton plan and the Fairview plan. The Fulton plan has been modified to accommodate the Avello operation. There's been some changes where we now have entry and exit separated. The sidewalk has been moved to the east side of the driveway and then we'll cross the driveway and we'll be extending a sidewalk down to the rail trail. The movements are controlled here. We checked the turning tracks for the large vehicles into Avello's and exiting his property. So right now, this plan accommodates both the residential and the industrial use. There would be control beyond his exit in terms of security control to the development. In terms of, this location was identified to provide adequate site distance along Fulton Street. Under either of these plans, we also have worked with your consultants and the highway superintendent about making some improvements and modifications to the fairway connection to Fulton Avenue. So under either plan, those improvements would be advanced. I think from an access standpoint, that handles all movements appropriately. The modifications at the Fairview intersection would create some additional separation distance to that driveway. The second plan, which we refer to as the Fairview plan, so there would be no access near the Avello property. This plan requires some significant grading and, you know, to be able to get the connection up to Fairview. As indicated here, there would be a realignment of Fairview where it intersects with Fulton. It would become more of a T-intersection. Of course, the radius here would still accommodate any of the large vehicles, there are, you know, some of the Avello trucks that do go out this way. In terms of this access connection here, Fairview in this vicinity has some vertical alignment changes. So not only would we have significant grading on our property, but to get the sight lines, we will be doing clearing along Fairview as well as grading and it looks like we'll have to do some realignment work of Fairview itself in terms of the vertical alignment of that. So, you know, in general, without getting into all the engineering details, those are the two alternatives that we have now in front of the board. The one plan separates the residential from the industrial use. The other plan keeps that combined access, but does provide a separation that works for the vehicles coming to Avello's plant and/or, you know, to the development. So that's pretty much where we are now. We've analyzed each in terms of operations of movement. They both were... There are a few other items in terms of technical traffic items that we have, but I don't think we need to necessarily get into them, they're pretty straightforward and we just received the letter from your traffic consultant dated May 6th, so we'll respond to those, but nothing that really affects the access.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the planning department, we're gonna refer comments to our consulting planner, Liz Axelson, and consulting engineer Maris Associates represented by tonight by Joe Dennis, and we also have comments coming from our traffic consultant, Richard Pearson.
Liz, you wanna start?
I don't wanna get into too many specifics either because this, the project's shaping up. It's nice to see the potential access changes. We need to kind of flesh things out a little bit more so that, that the project is ready so that the planning board can kind of jump through three hoops at once. Seeker, being pretty much ready for the land contour permit and being ready for the zoning recommendation. So I did some extensive comments and the main thing on the land contour permit is we just need enough so that it can stand on its own. I know both Joe and I recommended consideration of using rock face and possibly terracing as an alternative in that design. I think we could use a little bit more narrative about how this goes along with the town plan and relates to the neighborhood. I know that I had a number of questions on demographic stuff, but I think what the planning board now has in their hands is they have kind of a range of estimate of projected population and I think, so you have, you have something to work with for considering this project. I did prepare a separate table so you can look at that. Those are really my main points, only that if we're gonna go ahead with the land contour permit, we need to get to the point where, if it could stand on its own. You know, if it got started and then the rest of the project didn't come along right away, it's in good shape, so.
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm done.
We understand that and on the point of just the physical, how to physically do it with the potential for terracing, it's a perfectly fine idea and we can work into that plan, an alternate, a what-if, depending on what soil we hit back there, 'cause, you know, as you've noted, we've got more geotechnical to come. So to have a, to have a couple of choices depending on the soil type, I mean, we would need to make them in the field with you anyway, depending on what it is, so we can work some of that into the plan. So, and again, I certainly understand the idea of walking through a phase by time, depending on time of year, so that makes, that makes perfect sense. I don't think that, the other element of it with...
Reclamation.
Reclamation and restoration, again, too, we're, we're fine with that. So, I mean, it makes sense and we can work something out there. I don't see anything that we can't develop even as a condition of approval or so on, however, however this board wants to handle that, because it's separate and concurrent. But if we look at that, if we can look at that with the hat on of just the land contour permit, it could be decoupled and I think it should be decoupled potentially from the rest of the conversation.
Yeah, and all I was saying is that, you know, once we can get enough so that the board's comfortable for seeker and comfortable enough to do the zoning recommendation because the land contour is kind of designed for that development.
The issue, if I, if I'm correct, was that the planning board was concerned with what happens if we start this land contour change permit and we stop midstream and don't, don't complete the project, which I think you've had other situations occur in the town. And so what we discussed doing is providing in our next submission is what we would call a reclamation plan. So if that situation would occur, what we would be obligated to do to the site to reclaim it back to a stabilized, green, grass-growing, whatever it is facility, is that what you're looking for?
That's exactly it.
Okay.
And our rules also require posting of a performance security in case the guys really, really walk away, so the town has money to be able to go in and stabilize the site.
So I have to agree to work to the town for the rest of my life and if they say walk away?
Probably, probably, probably more than that.
Okay. Okay.
We'll have you out there breaking rocks. Thank you, Liz.
I'm done.
Joe?
Yeah, I believe that approach makes sense and we've done that other places. We've put some general notes on the plans, kind of describing the process and some of it can be worked out in the field depending on conditions and that type of thing, so that'd be good. We could work with you on getting those kinds of notes together on the plan. Yeah, we had some other comments related to blasting and the phasing of the work and just getting some more details on that. You have several retaining walls and those details come typically later in the process, the design of those.
Retaining walls in the full project.
Right.
Not in the land contour element.
Right, yeah, yeah. We had the SWIP for the land contour, we provided comments on those, they weren't very significant. The site plan though, you'll have a little more of a challenge with the SWIP on that, I think, but we'll get into those details next time around. And water and sewer, we had the conceptual engineers report and those details will continue to be worked out as well. I guess just going back to land contour permit, there was mention about maybe doing some onsite processing or screening. Again, we could probably pull together some notes on how to stage and work that through on the plans. For traffic, I mean, Rich and I have been kind of working on related comments on access and I'll leave most of that over to Rich, but just to mention, this project together with some Maris projects is having more of a, seemingly more of an impact on Fulton Street and some of the nearby intersections and I know Phil's office is looking at that closely and, and he and Rich are working together, so. I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Rich?
As Joe mentioned, we've been coordinating between ourselves and the town staff as well as with Mark, with the highway department and, and the applicant as well to try to resolve some of these access issues that we've brought about and mitigation as well. Relative to my letter, I'll just bring out some of the highlights. We had requested information on accident reports and they have ordered that information, but it has not been submitted at this time. We also asked for some more information regarding site distances. They've provided information and we're, we're asking for some more information. The question of additional developments is something that we're continuing to work with them on. As Joe mentioned, Maris has applications including the Beck Place parking lot expansion and we understand that there may be an application coming soon on 51 Fulton Street and also the student housing. So this should be a comprehensive study to the extent practicable, whether, whether this application will consider all of Maris or whether Maris considers this and the cumulative for Maris. That, that will be worked out as, as we go forward, but it does seem like everything will be brought together and analyzed. There's discussion on the operation of the Beck Place and Fulton Street intersection. Maris had proposed to make Beck Place one-way southbound, which would help that intersection operation by taking people rather than competing for gaps coming out onto Fulton Street with people coming out of the Mid Hudson Plaza Shopping Center driveway. If the Beck traffic moves east, that would essentially improve operations for coming out of the shopping center driveway. There had been consideration of a roundabout or traffic signal at that location. If there were to be an improvement, I'd be leaning towards a traffic signal at that location. We asked for them to do some field measurements relative to actual delays and queuing and compare that to the computer analysis results. We also looked at providing a sidewalk along Fulton Street. Their, their actual response in their application didn't, it talked about some restrictions with potentially right-of-way and also some significant embankments along the road and there's utilities in that area and to widen that area to provide a sidewalk would be very expensive and difficult. Not saying it couldn't be done, but we started to look at, and actually narrowing the roads' width. The road itself is about thirty feet wide with fifteen-foot travel lanes, so we looked at narrowing the road width down and providing a sidewalk essentially within the existing improved area. That would have the benefit of having a pedestrian sidewalk and narrower lanes tend to reduce travel speeds. We have observed that the, many of the motorists travel faster than the thirty mile-per-hour speed limit there, so, so this would be a width that is still a relative standard width and, and would have that benefit. We also looked at the intersection of Fulton Street and the eastern leg of Fairview Avenue and site distance is very limited for people coming north on the eastern leg and, and then either trying to make, most, most of those vehicles that do go up there, if they're not making a right turn, they're going across to the other side of the street and, and that site distance is very limited. And what we have recommended for consideration is to have that be an always-stop intersection, which would address the site distance issues and it would have, while not the primary intent, it would have the side benefit of reducing travel speeds along Fulton Street. Phil had talked about the two-access schemes that have been considered. The original scheme that was submitted with their last submission in April had the combined driveway for the commercial and, or excuse me, the industrial and residential projects and, and my concern especially was that vehicles coming out of the industrial property would essentially occupy all of the driveway width trying to make a left turn going back to Route Nine. So anybody who might be traveling east on Fulton Street and coming in to make a right turn would, would be encountered by those exiting vehicles. So with the plan, the one alternative that they have presented tonight, that would provide greater separation from Fulton Street for vehicles exiting the, the property, so that would, that would improve that condition substantially compared to what they submitted. They've also modified the sidewalk location, moving it to the east side of that driveway rather than the west side, which, which is a safer alignment in our opinion. The second access alternative onto, onto Fairview would separate the, the two types of uses, which is desirable from a planning perspective. The concern that we've had, that we've expressed to Phil and to staff is the site distances for the, for that alignment. We think that it could be made where site distances are proper, but it is, as Phil mentioned, involving regrading the embankments and possibly actually taking out some of that vertical curve, softening the vertical curve to improve the site distance. So we continue to work with the applicant and your board and staff. If there's a preferred alternative, we could go either way from a traffic perspective, capacity-wise, either one would work. So it's a question of, in part, a preference on separating the two uses. If that was a strong desire of the board, then, then that could be achieved. We also looked at an access onto Lake Street, which was raised as a possibility. Lake Street is the, the short road with a few houses.
It's a paper street?
Actually, there's about three houses there and we would not recommend access at that point being connected to this property because there are site distance constraints with Fairview Drive at that location. So one access, a third location is actually on West Cedar to the south and what we could have and what we're recommending is that be an entrance-only access driveway. Yeah, I'll grab a...
Here, we'll point you over.
Yeah, I was gonna get mine now. Thank you.
No, there's one down there.
Correct, where Kelly's pointing is, right there is West Cedar and we could have an entrance-only.
Okay.
I've got one.
Okay, he's got one.
So we've, over here is, is right there where we could have an entrance-only driveway to relieve some of the traffic on Fulton Street and then we could also have a sidewalk connecting from the development to West Cedar, which has a sidewalk system to, to get people up to the park and over to the hospital and, and other uses in that area, including the, the sidewalk back to Maris through the tunnel. back to Marist through the tunnel. So I believe that's my highlights. I'll just check. Oh, also, as Phil mentioned, the improvements to the west leg of Fairview, teeing that up will improve conditions there, slow some speeds for people coming around the wide radius as they're coming east on Fulton Street and going south on Fairview. And also on the eastern leg, this area of Fairview, one portion is 17 feet wide or less in width here, so it gets quite constrained. Even though the volume's not very high on that leg, we're recommending that that be northbound only. So people coming up Fairview would continue here and if people want to make a left turn from Fulton Street onto Fairview, they would make it at this new improved intersection of the western leg. And I believe that concludes my major comments.
Thank you. I see we have our esteemed highway superintendent in the audience. Mark, you have any comments you want to make or anything? I gotta take the microphone, but come on up.
Thanks. I think they've done a great job giving us two alternatives, reducing the speed of the traffic, as Rich was mentioning. It appears to be the most important thing here. So if we tean up the intersection at Fairview and Fulton is a major concern. I think that's the biggest part, kind of yield to the expertise of the traffic advisors when they determine which, if they think Fulton is a safer access than Fairview. I like the way Fairview turns out. There's so many cars on Fulton. My biggest concern was the speed of Fulton, but we're slowing it down now. So if it determines that the entrance off of Fulton would be more favorable, I think it's a much better way now that they've designed it with the T, the stop signs and everything else. I think that would be fine. I think Fairview is a good alternative as well. So I'm pretty happy with both of them, honestly. And I think that they've done a great job designing, giving us two alternatives and doing the things that we've asked for. So I think that both of them would work out and whichever the traffic study shows, which would be a safer entrance, you know, you gotta kind of yield to their profession a little bit. That's where I'm at, basically.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Glad they gave us the alternative. It's a better thing to look at. And teeing the intersection no matter what with those stop signs is very important.
I think that is too. I'd like the applicant to come away this evening with a sense of what, on this particular subject, what the board feels is, you know, to their liking. So you have some idea where, you know, we're at. Have our discussion. I think you'll be able to glean that out.
Good.
Okay. Let's see. Can we go around the board? We start with Joe?
Yes, I agree with Mark. I like better this option two because it will clean that piece of section, a piece of corner, because right now it's a, I know the town owns that corner and stuff like that. So it will improve the look. And at least avellos will, you know, I'm sure you'll put trees and fence there, right, to block view. Yeah, I agree. I like this better. I think it'll be a good asset to that corner. It will look much better and plus it'll show the property in one corner. You know, coming down from Fulton, going west will give you a better look.
Yeah, I think that corner, what we envisioned, it's really not reflective on this plan, but part of that is owned by the town. So there would be a swap, you know, an acquisition. And because there's so many utilities in there, there's nothing you can build on it. So we would make that a pretty green landscaped area. So it'd be a nice kind of introduction there to the.
I guess Mark's gonna lose property there. He's not gonna dump all the stuff anymore. Yeah, he's gonna lose that. It goes the neighborhood.
Let me call. You're still gonna have enough room to do.
Yeah. He's gonna need that. He's gonna need that.
Actually, the entrance, as we go in, when we do it, it's almost impossible for us to pull in half the time the way this is. This is pushed back a little further than we want. It's gotta shove out a little bit and give us a little bit more room. When we come down, we always turn into Fairview. We don't take the top road here. When we go to turn in, it's almost impossible for our big trucks to make this turn. So with it squared off like this, it gives us an easier access. This is pushed up a little higher. This is gonna have to come down a little. We can't give that much away or we won't have anything to dump. But we're still gonna use the property, but it gives us actually a nicer entrance, the way it works. You know, it's a square turn for us. Bigger trucks can make it. It's not so difficult for us. Usually, we have to stop, back up and come in and with the cars coming up Fairview, doing a little bit more than 30, or from Fulton, it makes it a little tough sometimes.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anything else on it? You okay for now? Joe?
I'm okay. Yep. Thank you.
Marvin?
I think that looks a lot better, but the only question I have is the slope coming in that second alternative you gave us right here, the slope going down and coming up.
Which specific slopes?
From the.
Here?
Right.
The slope coming out and going into this.
I haven't reviewed the slopes of their proposed driveway, if that's what you're asking for?
Yeah.
I haven't seen that submitted yet. All we've seen is two-dimensional alignment.
I think.
But it is something to be reviewed, yeah.
Especially in the wintertime.
Agreed.
Springtime with the heavy rains that we're expecting to get every time now.
I can answer that if the question is about in our site.
It is, yeah.
So that drive, we come in at 1% basically and we'll go down at 6%, 7% through the steeper portion of it, which is why it bends off to the left and we have that separate section going around and intersecting down to the site area over here. So we did consider that when we brought it in here. So this is 1% in, just trying to be really conservative about it in the beginning and we brought it around. There's a little bit of steepness in here, but there's no access off of it in here. So when I say steepness, I'm talking 7, 6, 7, maybe 8% at the steepest right there. But then we go right back down to 2% or more. We do not grade or like to grade any parking lots over 4, honestly. Sometimes you have to, but we've accommodated. We've considered that here. So we'll expect this actually to step down. This building will be higher than this one. So we've thought that through and placed it there to work.
And an 8% slope on a driveway is acceptable.
Yeah. How about drainage then, for that?
The drainage here, just like in our other project, we would capture this, we'd bring it into our storm drainage system. We're putting a lot of water back into the ground through infiltration throughout this whole zone here and this zone here. So it'll fit in. Actually, when you look at the two, very interestingly, there's almost no difference in hard surface. There's almost no difference in the amount of area that we would impact for the project. The open space is still over 30%. It's just within a half a percent of the same. So my first thought is that this might be greater, but it isn't. It doesn't prove out that way. And as Kelly mentioned, we got to preserve and enhance basically this corner. So that's an advantage, honestly, to Fulton, I think, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize. I missed the first two meetings on this project, but is there any park land in there that's for the residents?
One of the things that we discussed at the first meeting was that we were advancing the plans in two stages. So we're trying to address seeker first and then really dig into the streetscape issues. So at this point, what we had, and I can get you actually some separate plans to show you because we did a really cool architectural flyby, but this is a courtyard here. That's a, it's very big. And so we have a lot of options that we can work with in there to try to provide some outdoor recreation. The other thing that we spoke about is this open space area is just a really great potential trail system, somewhere where people could walk through. We really want to try to preserve some of that vegetation in there.
It's a pretty steep slope in there, isn't it?
It is, but it's kind of nice. You know, it's a great little trail system.
It is actually, except for it's relatively level following the stream corridor.
Okay.
Up through to Fairview.
It's pretty back there.
Yeah.
So yes, we started to think about it. It's something that we certainly want to talk to you about and that's the next phase.
Thank you. I think it's a great project. I just, I get concerned about a big project like this. You got some other condos and so forth just up the road who've been trying to fill that place up for a long time. And when we started to get into land contours and stripping down the land and so on and so forth, I get worried about what's left behind if the development project does not go through. So from a long-term standpoint, I really hope the project works and is marketed and it's gonna happen, but I worry about if it doesn't. And there's a number of examples I could go through in Poughkeepsie Town that have not happened and have left some eyesores that are pretty bad.
Mm-hmm.
So that is a huge concern on my part and I hope we can address it as we go through this. That's all I have for tonight.
I'm hoping that one of the ways that we can address that is with that reclamation plan that we had spoken of. So, you know, God forbid this doesn't go through and the land contour is the last that you see.
Make sure the geology reports are correct, too.
We certainly hope they are.
Okay. Thanks, Ed.
We'll have them speak to you next if they're not.
At this point, to me, I mean, I agree that we need to consider the, in large, long-term impacts if something doesn't go through. But right now, the traffic in Fairview and Fulton, my preference is option two. If it turns out we end up wanting to do option one, you know, exiting onto Fulton, I would still like to see Fairview squared off, either way, because I think that would improve Fairview and the access on Fairview and then that traffic thing in there, you know, considerably. So in either case, I would like to see Fairview squared off, but overall, I think I prefer the second one. The other issues that Joe and Marv and Ed have brought up, I mean, are issues that we've got to work through and I think we will before we get to the end of this.
Thank you.
Carl?
Hi. I think my biggest issues are connectivity, both vehicular and pedestrian. Rich went through quite a bit of detail on that already, which was good. And I see you do have sidewalk connections to the, to West Cedar and some plant along Fulton. I like the idea of continuing Fulton by being able to narrow the pavement. You know, that helps gain that, gain that in a cheaper way. Thanks for the bike cracks. I see those. I think, you know, the kind of people you're gonna draw to this and, you know, the fact that it ties into a lot of desirable destinations around it, within walking distance from the park to the college and the shopping, is just something you have to consider, all The, from the traffic point of view, it sounds like, I think I like the second proposal as well, to get more traffic off of Fulton directly, as long as Mark's happy with not taking too much of the area and site distance can be managed, I guess, depending on where that road squares off. And I think that could look nice, you know, coming down into the hill there, coming down, looking into the site. Do you know at this point if you're gonna need blasting as part of the land contour?
We don't believe we do, just based on what we know. We have, we are going to pursue a very aggressive, boring project, but from what we've seen so far, we do not believe that we will need blasting.
That's good. I know, I think the county might recommend trying to include Lake Street for more access, but I see, you know, from a topography standpoint, that doesn't look like it'll work.
Right. You'd have to, not to belabor the point, but you'd have to build it from Fairview down through. And when you walk in there, it's pretty well-used by the neighbors at the moment. It's a complete road build down to the site, plus the gray change into our site. And I think that was seen from those of you who've been out there.
All right.
I guess I.
But also, I may not have been clear enough. There is a site distance issue for people coming out of Lake Street. If you'd want to look to your left on Fairview, for people approaching in a southbound direction towards Lake Street, the, there's a vertical curve and so there's very limited site distance for people that are approaching Lake Street and I wouldn't recommend that access.
Okay, sounds good. I do, I think you have it labeled just as emergency access right now to West Cedar, but.
Right.
Like the idea of coming in, at least a one-way in or something, that will get more traffic off of Fulton, just kind of make it circular.
Yes, that was, that was the plan as of this most current round, was to do what you're describing.
Okay, great. And lastly, I think as far as, you know, I thought the terracing idea was good versus a lot of vertical. Maybe there's an opportunity for site amenities there, some kind of gardens, the trail. There's lots that can be done in such a much area there.
Yeah, often if we do, if we have terracing, when we do bench slopes, for instance, which is the same thing, we can plant along that slope. So it's, you have to, you just have to do the engineering of it and consider is the benching, so you can get planting up there, which is what we got going on. You need probably 8, 10 feet, 12 feet is really good to get a nice tree growth up that, but that's set in and continue to take up more slope as you go up the hill. So there's a balance, so. But I agree with the terracing concept.
Sorry, I think that's all for now. Thanks.
Thanks, Carl. Peter?
I think in terms of this secret review, you're making substantive progress. We are charged by the town board to perform two functions here. In addition to the secret review, we've been asked to make a recommendation regarding the planned residential overlay district. Now, the town board enacted that overlay district for a specific purpose and that was to provide market housing for, it's really needed in our community. As a matter of fact, the district purpose under the ordinance reads, "This overlay district is to encourage the provision of housing opportunities for working individuals, couples, families and seniors part of a multiple unit development." Average household size in Dutchess County is 2.59 people. That number has not changed in almost 15 years. In other words, there's, if there's a trend to be developed, it would be a flat line. 80% of the units that you're proposing here are four-bedroom units. In the last 14 years of little over 2,000 units constructed in Dutchess County, no, zero four-bedroom units. So I'm willing to be convinced that this project qualifies under the PROD, but I think we want to see, we want to be, at least I want to be convinced that it actually qualifies to be designated on this site.
Thank you for explaining that, Peter, because I know I was a little remiss in giving you the market study that you had asked for at the last meeting. And so one of my challenges was trying to understand exactly, we do have a pretty extensive market study, some of which is not necessarily public information, it's proprietary to us, but some of which we'd like to share with you. So thank you for explaining that. Now I think I'm in a better position to give you what you need to justify that breakdown and we'll get that to you. We'll redact what we want to redact out of it and give you that information so that you can make that decision.
Well, the town board has the sole authority to grant the PROD, but it's our responsibility, if we're gonna make a recommendation, the town board, to have as much information as we possibly can to base that recommendation.
I mean, both boards are gonna need to hear that.
Yes, I understand. And that helps. That helps clarify the purpose for it.
Thank you. Carol, I missed you before. I'm sorry. Do you have anything on that?
No, nothing new.
Nothing new. Okay. Thank you. Ed, you had one more comment on that.
I was just wondering if you've talked to the children's home, make sure they're on board with this project as well, for some conceptual aspects. I mean, they play a big role in that whole traffic study as well.
We haven't individually spoken with the children's home. Certainly, all of these meetings are public, but I haven't reached out to them individually to see what their feeling is regarding the project. If that's something that you'd like us to do, we can, but.
I think from a traffic standpoint, it might be a good idea to get their input as well.
Yeah, the children's home has acquired some properties on the south side of Fulton in the last couple of years. So they've got this sort of crossing, I think, of staff with other clients that's occurring. Wouldn't be a bad idea to at least have the conversation and I'm more than happy to facilitate that.
Okay, good.
Maybe it could be a common crosswalk that fits in, you know, to them and this project somehow.
It may help justify it, yeah.
Regarding Peter's comments as well, I was curious as to when that study might be available for all of us.
I can bring that over this week, if you want, and give you individual copies or I can scan it and, you know, if it's something.
Can we just include it in the regular package? Otherwise, we're gonna have.
Yeah, I'd rather do that, but it sounded like you wanted it sooner than later.
No, no, I'm just, I didn't know if it was next month, next week, next.
No, I have, I have a study, but I was really not clear and I should have reached out to find out specifically what you needed.
Make it part of the middle.
I think that would kind of help some of my concerns as well.
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
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 Okay, I, my only other, I only had a comment regarding the project that it's nice to see that if this comes to fruition, that we're gonna have something up there that, for a change, will be paying taxes and helping the fire district, as an example, with some of their, you know, money issues and so on. So it's a fully. So it's a fully taxed type of entity.
That's correct.
And so that's very positive.
I think this is unlike a lot of the new projects that they've seen in the district, so this will be a fully paid...
It's unusual in that regard, yes.
Thank you.
I move that the planning board determine that the application is incomplete for secret review pending further elaboration on the proposed development and its potential effects.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we moved and seconded that the planning board determine that the application is incomplete for secret review pending further elaboration on the proposed development and its potential effects. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on this prod designation, site plan, and land contour, and aquatic resource permit applications, and direct the applicant to respond to the comments of the planning.
Okay. Of the planning board.
Of the planning board, to include board and those received from the town departments, eight agencies including but not limited to the following, one through 13, plus the items discussed here tonight by the board and the various consultants.
We moved and seconded the planning board defer action on this PROD designation, site plan and land contour, and aquatic resource permit applications, direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, one through 13, any other comments made this evening as part of this application. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could request that, I think the next step is to schedule this matter for a public hearing for the next month so that we could solicit the public comments and then move to address seeker.
Okay.
It's probably reasonable to start the public hearing process with the next of middle. Yeah, I mean, we'll send the notices and all of that out, but that's probably a reason, you know, I'd like to kind of get the conversation with the public started sooner rather than later, so, you know.
So could we schedule that, we'll schedule that then for the June 19th? Okay, okay, very good.
That's fine.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, application C2 Hudson Heritage, discussion of a concept plan by the new owner, 3532 North Road Zoned HRDD Historic Revitalization Development District, 156.19 acres, EFG/ DRA Heritage LLC owner. This is a discussion.
Please have some things.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, appreciate having the opportunity this evening. My name is Nicholas Manoy. I'm the managing partner of DRA, Diversified Realty Advisors, which is one of the joint venture partners of the DRA EFG Enterprises that owns the property known as Heritage Hudson, Hudson Heritage, as you've indicated, 156 acres, the former state hospital property. We come here this evening for kind of a meet and greet, if you will, to give information on who we are and how long we've been involved with the property, where we are in the process, and what the expectations are on a going-forward basis. We have some literature we'd like to hand out. Unfortunately, we don't have enough copies. We were here last evening, it's kind of deja vu all over again. We presented before the town board, we gave out more copies than we expected, so we're a little bit short, but there are bios of both firms. We are a joint venture entity with a real estate development company, of which I'm a managing member, and a brownfield redevelopment company out of Denver, Colorado, and you'll read that, there's bio and company information, histories, significant projects, et cetera, in the brochure package, which we've handed out. So certainly feel free to leaf through that as we're making our presentation, or give it some thought, put an eye on it afterward at your convenience. Our history as a company, we are generally speaking developers of master-planned communities largely based on residential development. We also do some retail and associated commercial development. We've been in the business about 25 years approximately, my partner and I, John Stein, and the association with the EFG and Viro Finance Group out of Denver is a recent collaboration for us with a couple of projects in New Jersey, and most recently, this project to acquire the Hudson Heritage property, which we did in November of last year. We acquired the property from a predecessor entitled CPC, Community Preservation Corporation, based in New York City. I'm sure everybody's familiar with the property. It's certainly, after 100-plus years of being located in your community, I'm sure everybody pretty much knows the colorful history of the past. The last eight to 10 years or so, the property has certainly fallen into a very significant amount of disrepair and degradation from weather and vandalism, and it's challenging to say the least to look at some of the buildings that are fallen in such a state of repair. There is an aerial here, just to orient you, for sometimes it's good to take a look at specifically where we're referencing, but to the left of the aerial, of course, is Route 9, just to the lower part of this page. By the way, this is George Carfagno, George is Carfagno, George is a project manager for us, vice president of the company, and works 24/7 on this project. It's almost his exclusive domain to work on this project. It has enough aspects to it that George sleeps, breathes, eats, and otherwise with this project. So there's 156 acres...
Which one is yours, George? Which one's your house?
Right, George has already picked his spot. There are over 50 structures on the property compromising over a million square feet of vacant, essentially dilapidated space, and we're in the process now of, we've engaged structural engineers who are going through these buildings one by one to determine the structural integrity of all of these buildings in an effort to try to categorize in some type of a scale what we do with these buildings. There's also an asbestos survey being done as we speak. Company's been hired to move building by building, floor by floor, room by room, to analyze the depth and breadth of asbestos-related materials in these properties. George, just kind of for sake of pointing out the little bit on the property, show the admin building kind of up there in the middle of the property. So that's the admin building, everybody knows that building, highly recognizable, its architecture is certainly unique. It's about 80,000 square feet in its core, plus the associated, what's known as the north wing and the south wing, of course, which was essentially destroyed by fire some years ago. So that's kind of a pile of construction and asbestos debris that has to be dealt with. To the southern portion of the site, down adjacent to where Home Depot is, there's Winslow Gate Road, which enters the property, and there is what's known as Ryan Hall, Cheney, and the rec building down in that area there. And you'll see on the concept plan that we're going to present to you, that's essentially the area that we'll define as the area for commercial development, which would be contiguous to the existing Home Depot and adjacent to Route 9. We have hired, there are several professionals here with us this evening that are part of our team. We've hired a complete complement of associated team members for eventual presentation and working on seeker, and there is in the back of, I believe it's the last page in the Diversified Realty Advisors pamphlet, there's a schedule of all of the professionals on this project that have already been hired, with the exception of one, I think Looney Ricks from Princeton, New Jersey. They're all New York-based companies, so we've made an effort, a big effort, to work with New York-related companies. And the Looney Ricks, who is the master planner on our project, actually we inherited. They were involved in this project before we were involved in it. They actually did some significant concept plans, master plan many years ago on the project, and we liked what they had done. We actually held a somewhat of a contest between three different nationally represented firms that do master planning of this magnitude, and they actually won the contest, if you will, of presenting the plan that we thought was the most significant and best suited the economic engine that we thought made sense to move forward under the current zoning. So that list is fairly comprehensive, and for the most part completes all of the professionals that will be working on the project. This evening, Richard Cantor from Tehan and Constantino is here, who's our local counsel. Stuart Messenger from Chasen Companies is our project engineer, is here this evening. Janet Gures from the Del Bello Wine Garden, there's a lot of names in between that I can't remember. Law firm from Westchester is here this evening, as is Bill Madden from Focus Media, our PR company, and of course, George. So we have a fairly detailed contingent of professionals that are already working on the project. We were here last evening, we thought that the reception to our presentation was terrific. As with any project, there's always a couple of constructive comments, which we'll take under advisement and into consideration, and we'll make the presentation again this evening. Over the last six or seven months that we've actually owned the property, we've had, I don't know, Neil, eight, seven, eight, nine, 10 meetings with Neil and Eric and other members of the staff as we try to incorporate as many comments as we can from staff and understand what the desires are of the town of Poughkeepsie and what the process is, and attempt to all, you know, roll it into one comprehensive ball, if you will. It's a complicated project, there's a lot of issues attendant to it, namely with structures that are in various stages of some kind of historic designation, structurally unsound and environmentally contaminated in some cases. This property is the subject of a brownfield cleanup program application. We filed back in December. We actually split, bifurcated the property into what we call a north and south property, not by subdivision, but just by drawing a line based on environmental conditions. And George, if you can just kind of indicate, if you will, roughly what we call north and south. So everything from about the main road going north up to the Hyde Park border, we call it the north part of the property. We actually filed an application before the state to incorporate the entire property into the brownfield cleanup program, but unfortunately, and this is a good news, bad news, the southern portion does not qualify because there's not enough subsurface contamination to qualify for the cleanup program, which of course means that the burden of cleaning up, if you will, demolishing the buildings, the cost of the asbestos abatement and so on, will be borne by us as private developers with no assistance from the state brownfield cleanup program. On the other hand, the northern portion of the property does qualify under the state program, and DEC is working with us now to help us define what it is that we need to do to follow up with additional testing. Several buildings are going to need to be demolished in order to do subsurface testing at their request, namely buildings like the Power House, which was the main power center for this entire complex. There are mechanical garages and other related facilities that have some subsurface contamination, so we're working with the state on what it is that they need in order to fulfill the obligations to completely qualify for the brownfield cleanup program. So that's already underway. We closed on the property in November, we actually were accepted into the program in early December on a preliminary basis. Public comment for the program, I believe, was January into February, something like that. Public comment was closed out, and we were accepted into the program. So that's operating in the background of what it is that we're doing day-to-day, moving toward ultimately submitting an application. And again, the purpose tonight is to just give you a sense of where we are and solicit any comments, good, bad, or indifferent, that the board may have this evening. So George, if you want to put up that concept plan? Okay, so what we've done here, obviously the orientation is, it's a little, this drawing's a little clear to understand where we are. Everybody recognizes the Hudson River, of course, down below to the right, the lower left-hand corner is Marist. The commercial building just to the lower end of us, the southern portion is the Home Depot property, and then we are the 156 acres from Home Depot, north right to the border of Hyde Park. What we've done, the underlying zoning on the property allows up to 750 units of residential construction and 350,000 square feet of commercial space. There are multiple hurdles in the existing zoning to get to those thresholds, and we'll work with that during the scoping to see how we define, you know, how it is exactly we get there. What this plan encompasses is taking the maximum allowable density under the current zoning and lays it out in a way that we believe is fitting for the property. And one of the unique features of this particular plan is that we've allowed, that we've incorporated about 70 acres of open space out of the 156 acres. So close to 50% of the property is being left as open space under this concept plan. So working from south to north, there's approximately 40 acres of retail development. Some of the larger boxes, and then a more of a Main Street feel with a little bit of a different orientation of the main entrance into the complex on Hudson View Drive. We've created a boulevard entrance into a retail downtown feel. There'll be perpendicular or diagonal-type parking with small-scale retail, moving into some larger stores that are more in line with the Home Depot and the typical Route 9 type of retail development, so that we can take advantage of having anchor tenants, but at the same time, scale it down to a kind of a Main Street type of a feel with associated residential very nearby. And George, if you can just point out the rooftops adjacent to the retail there. Directly in the area of the retail, there are a number of housing types that will operate in and around the retail as part of this master-planned community so that the retail will thrive and function, and there'll be an associated living, working, shopping component to the way that the community operates. The rest of the housing types to the north and to the east are made up of a variety of housing types, which are condominiums and townhouses of many different distinct types, sizes, and architectural elements. And again, this is kind of a 30,000-foot view, if you will. We're not here to bear down on specifically what that architecture looks like. In fact, it hasn't even been planned out. This is a blocking plan to determine, you know, the density, the road network, taking advantage of a lot of what was there in place today, and working with, you know, all of the different housing types that we view are in demand or could be in demand in this marketplace. So this plan incorporates 750 residential units of varying types and 350,000 square feet of associated community and neighborhood retail. So with that in mind, and that's a lot to swallow, I'm looking for, we're looking for some feedback, any feedback that, sure, George?
George raises a great point. So one of the things, and we should have highlighted it actually on this plan, most of the buildings that are on this property, we believe are too far gone to be able to be saved. And what we've done was, and that was a first blush with an initial walk through the property and taking a structural engineer and trying to figure out what could be saved, what's economically viable, what's not. This plan incorporates four buildings that are on the property today for renovation or restoration. The main building being the admin building, which is the most notable of all the properties, all the buildings there, directly across from what was known as the Great Lawn. And the Great Lawn was an Olmsted design, we believe, open space park that we've left in a natural state here, and in fact, added probably another 30, 40 acres to it, and left it so that all the way from the boulevard entrance to Hyde Park is open space, so that that Olmsted park will probably, you know, 30 to 40 acres in total, directly across the street from the admin building, which we envisioned being restored for some type of hospitality, incubator, office-type related use. We're not sure, we're out in the market, we're soliciting... We're not sure, we're out in the market, we're soliciting levels of interest to see who may be out there. So that building is incorporated into this design as some type of a restored facility. Behind that, a couple of blocks behind, George, if you can just note that block, there are three buildings that are existing there today, namely the church, the community center, and the library. A couple of them are very, very bad condition, but we'd love to be able to save them and incorporate them into the overall recreation package for the residents in this community to turn them into facilities for entertainment and recreation. Eventually, there'll be a plan with swimming pool, tennis courts, sport courts, other things like that that don't exist here today on this plan, but there's enough open space that there'll be walking and jogging trails and just an open space element to this plan that connects to what we envision is the center of the recreation, namely those three buildings that we'd like to restore.
Anything else, George, that I can highlight? So those are, those are kind of the highlights of where we've been over the last six or seven months as we try to program this community and look at the vastness of it and the difficulty, if you will, of dealing with the economic reality of demolishing a million-plus square feet of burned asbestos and lead paint laden buildings. It's challenging, to say the least, and it's not like the economy is exactly thriving. We're coming on the heels of a recession, so we're looking at the realities as we go of the absorption and I think it was Mr. Perch, was it, the Perch, I'm sorry, that raised the issue of, you know, how many units in what period of time and for whatever project. The uniqueness of this is because it's a comprehensive master plan community, you'll draw from every neighborhood within a certain ring radius of the, of its location for housing that is desirable because it's a live-work-shop kind of a community. It's different than to just plop a shopping center or a residential community on a vacant lot as some type of a development. These communities tend to thrive and operate independently and in conjunction with the community, different than just some type of an urban redevelopment of a singular lot. So the size of the community is actually, works in our favor in that regard.
One of the challenges will be, since this is a multi-year build-out, you know, pick a number, five to 10, something like that, and, you know, in the usual course of site plan review, here's the site plan, we're going to build it, it'll be occupied a year and you go off and you sort of do it. One of the challenges would be how to figure out through the secret process, building in the flexibility to allow you to adapt the base plan to market conditions. And so one year you maybe, you know, you come in and you've got an intention to build X number residential in one year and then it turns out that maybe that market is so great, you want to do something else. The idea here is that we've got to use seeker in such a way that we don't have to reopen seeker for every minor change that maybe you want to, you want to make. But this still allows you to come before the board, get your plan changed, if that's what has to happen. But that's certainly going to be one of the challenges.
It's a great point, Neil, on a project like this that does have a longer life to it than a typical, you know, get in, get out, finish it in a year or two, it has some elastic, it needs the elasticity to it of a phasing schedule because over time, products change, markets change, demographics change, the type of product that may be in vogue today may not be in vogue four years from now or five years ago. Five years from now, when we get to the certain phase, that'll be next under construction. So you need that flexibility in a project like this so that it doesn't become functionally obsolescent during the period of development.
Are the, the buildings around the retail area, are they kind of, you're thinking about apartment complexes there or condo or, just curious about the, I think I understand the upper northern part.
You mean these parts here?
Yes. I don't know if you've thought that out yet or what?
You know, a lot of thought has not been given to the specifics and again, it's a little bit of a moving target. Some of these buildings will move around. We, it's kind of a placeholder right now that we think that we want those number, a certain quantity of units around the retail in order to make it function. And again, you're going to have restaurants in here, you'll have some type of nightlife so to stimulate the activity of the retail development.
There used to be a lot of nightlife up there.
I got news for you, there's still a lot of nightlife, only they're stealing copper. And by the way, that's an interesting point, that we have retained the police department here on a fairly significant basis to patrol the property, which hadn't been done prior to our ownership. There was a very limited patrols going on, but there is a very significant amount of theft from scrappers that has been going on there for probably a decade. And as the price of copper continues to escalate, I think it's $3.80 a pound, as I just happened to note it the other day, you know, they're tearing everything from, all of, most of the plumbing is gone out of all these buildings. Now they're working the flashings in the roofs, which is creating more degradation because now the roofs are leaking. So that whatever was preserved is just, it's really in rough shape.
Have you looked at all about, because there's a substantial tunnel system there connecting all of those?
We have, we've been, we've been in the tunnels, not all of them, but we're aware of it. We have, there is a plan, pretty much an as-built, we're not sure how accurate it is, that details the tunnels and there is a lot of steam lines that came out of the power plant that fed most of the buildings. There's asbestos in those tunnels as well. So it's, there's a lot of complexities to this project. This is, this is not for the faint-hearted, for sure.
Have you considered all some smaller retail, maybe up mixed in with the residential there on the northern section?
Did you have that type of thing in mind there, but you're too mixed in here?
Yeah.
To add some residential there along Route 9?
No, to add some retail.
Oh, to add some retail.
Up in, you know, smaller retail.
Yeah, I don't think it would fly. It doesn't fly for retailers. They're very in demand for visibility, especially now. Retail got hit very hard during the recession. They're only now starting to come out looking at opportunities for leasing. And I think that without being comprehensively, you know, clustered together or have the visibility of the traffic flow of a Route 9 destination, I think it would be very difficult to lease it. It doesn't mean that along the way, as Neil said, with the flexibility that as the community matures and there's a certain number of people there, obviously you're not going to build 750 units overnight. This is not, you know, it's not that kind of a development. It doesn't mean that a few years from now, we're not back here, you know, presumably after an approval and some level of construction and people living here say, you know what, we do need a, you know, a bookstore, a cafe or something up in the back because that's, it functions and works that way.
Have you considered, you know, I mean, you have the different uses, but they're still separate. It's not, it's not retail with office space and apartments above that, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, you know, we've-
I see your Sleepy Hollow plan for the GM plant and anything like that kind of-
Yeah, unfortunately, that concept rarely works. It's, it only works under the grossest kind of density that you can imagine, where you're in a very urban area where you have a high density factor. Office today, it's not even financeable, frankly. So there's a couple of things that work here. One is the economic reality and certainty of a project like this. Number two, and they're really inextricably combined, is that you have to build and finance these projects. You can't even finance office today. Spec office buildings, they're $0 to construct. And with the level of vacancy in the county and the surrounding areas, I think it's challenging, to say the least. Residential above retail doesn't really work only in urban, very dense urban areas. Once you get out where you start to spread it out a little bit, it becomes the last units to be rented or sold because it's not the first choice. In urban areas where there almost is no choice, it's very popular. And it's, and you're in a commuting area. If you're next to a train station or within a walking distance to a train station, we do that all the time. We have a large project in New Jersey, it's 750, coincidentally, it's the same number of units. It's about 750 with 100,000 feet of retail ground floor, but we're a few blocks from a major train station, so it's a big difference.
I mean, the closer the residential is to those, you get the free security for the retail and all this stuff.
It does work to some degree. You know, and again, I think the flexibility, I think Neil hit on a great point that, you know, we're pretty good at what we do, but we don't have all the answers either. And in this economy, it's, it's an ever-changing footprint and we have to be flexible so that we can, if we're going to make a success out of the project, there's got to be some creativity, there has to be some flexibility, there has to be a dynamic that's underpinned by economic reality and the ability to finance these things.
Yeah, for certainly, it's a long-term project over. Is there, do you have any ideas of the big boxes, you know, any?
Not really, we, you know, we've-
Thinking market rate of what?
We have, we've done no marketing for the retail other than to work on the master planning of what we think works in terms of what size box attracts other boxes so that you can have a successful development. We are working with a very large regional retail developer that may come on board with us to co-develop the property. They're based not too far from here and they have interest and we were very close to inking a contract, frankly, that they may have been here tonight to share the stage and we would have introduced them, but we're a step or two away. And I think everybody would be delighted if we can make that deal because that's going to drive this engine, frankly. Without that retail development, the rest of this is not reality. There is no way in this, in this market, in this economy, in this county, in my opinion, that anything would, anywhere near this number of dense units, this density or a project of this scale is supportable without the retail development. And unfortunately, the challenge to that is that when you look at the aerial, George, go back to that aerial for a second. The most expensive part of this project is the one that has to happen first. You have to develop the retail to get the residential to work. And the retail development, that 40 acres or so at the southern area is where all the largest buildings are that are the most costly to demolish, and those are the ones that don't qualify for the brownfield redevelopment program. So we have to finance it internally.
Chaney or Ryan are not convertible?
No, they, somebody looked at it for a jail, I think, at one time, it was some consideration, but for residential use, it's much too institutional.
Even has big box retail or any of that?
No, no, we don't see any use of them whatsoever, other than demolition.
It's hard to see on the plan, but do you tie in, the traffic tie-in to the Home Depot Plaza?
Yeah, that's Winslow Gate Road, that's, that's an existing traffic signalized intersection. So part of that would be one of the entrances at the southern portion of the property and then the northern portion exists today, but we've reoriented it a little bit under this plan so that it's a 90-degree turnoff at Route 9.
If I may-
Yes, absolutely, it's discussion.
First of all, thank you. I mean, I know this is a big project and thank you for choosing Poughkeepsie and also thank you for retain or, you know, hiring the local firms, five or six firms in Poughkeepsie. I mean, obviously it's premature, lots of questions, but I have few. Number one, you say brownfield, is the brownfield expiring in 2015?
The plan is under discussion now, there's been a fair amount of publicity, yes, it is. The current version is expiring, but there's a, there's a modification, there are several modifications to that program which have been bandied about and likely some version of one of those will be approved as an extension, is what we're being told. And again, because we've already qualified, we can do certain construction and development before the expiration in 2015, which again, is part of the motivation to move quickly here, we could take advantage of the program, even if it were to expire in 2015.
And I think you mentioned to, and I know, how many buildings are you going to retain and, you know, I know it's tough to say, but it would be nice because it's beautiful, it's nice, beautiful buildings back there and it's, you know, and I guess you answered the question. Are you going to work in phases, you know, like building section?
We do, a project like this is often, is almost always done in phases where you look at certain product types and there is a, there is a science, so to speak, to developing a project this large where you have to, again, in order to turn the lights on, so to speak, you have to get the retail going. You bring in an anchor, everybody else follows. You have to make the retail work because that's the driver that, that gives you a reason to be there. And by the way, I did, I did forget to mention, it just jogged my memory, we have other projects in this marketplace, several in fact. We have in Hyde Park, New York, we have the River Ridge Townhome Community. We are a kind of a Mr. Fix-It kind of an organization. We buy a lot of failed projects because we have what we think is the brainpower to turn around projects that are, have a lot of complexities or have failed in the, whatever economic cycle we're in. River Ridge and Hyde Park was one of those projects. We bought the debt on that project from a, from a local bank and took the projects to 160 townhouses. Only 30 had been built. The project failed for lack of capital essentially and the recession hit, of course, and they never built the clubhouse and the associated recreation there. So without the recreation, and this is a similar analogy, without the recreation, there's no clubhouse, no swimming pool, no sport court, no tennis court. They were able to sell 30 units because the market was thriving when they started, pre-recession, but then they ran out of gas because they didn't build the programming that people, the reason people were moving there was because they were going to have all these things. So you have to build them first, not last. So we, that's one project that we have, which is underway now. We're building the clubhouse and the associated rec facilities and we're finishing up some spec inventory. We also have a project in Newburgh, in the town of Newburgh, at the intersection of 84 and 87. We have 160 apartments under construction there right now and we just recently got approvals in New Windsor for 270 units. And we also, you see the, most notably, President Obama landed there yesterday for, to give his speech, landed on a property we have under contract.
Charge him?
You know, I think they were going to charge us for, you know, it was, we were actually on the property that morning with a lot of engineering work that was going on and the Secret Service showed up and said, you know, you're out of here.
That's the question I was going to ask you. Have you worked or can, have you had a project similar to this one that can we just maybe take a visit, take a look at? I know you have Baltimore and I've been to Baltimore, but I've never been in this area, but just an idea, similar project?
There are, every, there's a number of them listed in there and a lot of them are similar scale to what this is. Some of them, all of these projects have some element of what you'll see here that, you know, we take from one and pull to the other. So we'd be happy to arrange some kind of a tour for a group of people to look at projects that were either developed in the past or on the boards currently.
The other question I had was that, there is a need of a food supermarket in the area. I mean, the closest one is in Hyde Park, which is now maybe 600 miles. With a lot of apartments, there's a lot of studios in the area and you see that is, that is, you know, the previous developer, there's a need of food chain, there's a food store. I mean, I would like to see some of that. I mean, more mentioned Walmart, the closest Walmart is down Fishkill, which is about 12 miles, if I do my numbers right, just about. But I'd like to see something fancy. I'd like to see maybe a Trader Joe, similar to that, you know, and I agree with you, the market does not, but-
And you're right, and look, optimally, we'd like to bring the, we want to bring the, it's our, to our benefit to bring the highest level of retail tenancy that we can that's supported by the local demographics. It's only in our best interest. You know, if we could bring Wegmans, we'd bring Wegmans.
That would be great.
Frankly, we've already spoken with Wegmans and they, they're not interested in the location because of the demographics. So we have to deal with a little bit of a dose of reality of who it is that we can attract based on the economy, where we are in the cycle, what the demographics are, what the traffic counts are, and what the competition for similar services are. We will go out to the market and solicit at the highest levels. I mean, we're, we've talked, some of these discussions are still ongoing. I mean, we're talking to, you know, other type retailers, Bass Pro Shops, Cabelas, I mean, other, others that aren't necessarily in the market to see if we can solicit tenants that are uniquely, unique for perhaps the location or a different driver to attract ultimately the success, hopefully, of the residential end of it. So we are looking at items like that.
We would like to see something, we'd like for you to succeed, we don't want that empty plaza, whatever case might be. My last question is, I play golf there, is that a golf course you're going to keep there? It seems to be a golf court.
Well, there was, it kind of looks like, it's really not intended to be a golf course, but there actually was a golf course there, there was, there was a nine-hole course there.
It's really nice.
But Joe doesn't like rattlesnakes.
Well, actually, yeah, that was the first time I saw rattlesnake and I ran like a-
Is that right, was there?
Yeah, there were. It would be nice if you suggest, you know.
I didn't know there were rattlesnake, was that, is it Copperheads or is it?
We have lots of those things.
I think you got both.
Thank you, George, thank you. Thank you very much, I think, I'm excited.
Thank you.
You know, I know there's a lot of work to be done.
A lot of work to be done, it's a huge commitment and, look, we stepped up to the plate and we took on a real significant, challenging burden and we have the horsepower financially and technically- and, and technically to get it done and it's really only going to happen with the full cooperation of the community. That's really the bottom line.
You only think seven hundred and fifty units?
It's a lot, but you have to, you know what, you have to break that down into it. If it takes ten years, you have to look at it like you're going to approve seventy-five units. It's really, you can't, you, you really can't, you can't look at it that way. We could have come back and said, you know what, there's another seventy acres there, let's put another seven hundred and fifty units and shown you a plan for fifteen hundred units because they'll fit here. But we said, you know what, the underlying zoning is for seven fifty, let's not rock the boat, we'll go with the seven fifty. We'd like to have more frankly, because the cost of the demolition on this project is way north of ten million dollars by itself. So by the time you do the math, you can start dividing that by the number of units and you know what housing's selling for in your market. You can figure out pretty quickly whether this is going to work or not, so.
Well, you already start having people demolition, they were, you know, taking stuff out, so it's a good start.
Yeah, we should just, we, that's why we keep, we, we let them go to a certain extent.
Just put a sign and says, you know, things to take.
Right.
Thanks very much.
Free, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Free bricks.
Free bricks, right.
Joe, Carol, Rich, anybody, you know.
Just want to echo the, the supermarket comment, you know, there was supposed to be a supermarket in that plaza there as well and so I think there is a need in that area. And the closest Trader Joe's is Danbury. Whole Foods is, is not in the area as well, but whatever the market.
Yeah, yeah, that, there, there is that size, that larger box, not the largest one, but the, the one closest to Route nine, that's a supermarket sized box. So we, we're, we're in the market, we'd love to find one. There's a couple that are, that are looking. You don't know whether or not it's perfect for them because they have their own criteria that doesn't necessarily, you know, coincide with ours.
Perfect. I lived, I lived in Rochester for four years and Wegmans is the-
Oh, they're fantastic operator. They really are. They just got approved in, in New Jersey, in Montvale, New Jersey about a week ago for another store. I think there's, there's probably four of them there, but they're very difficult to-
They're getting closer.
Uh, they're getting closer.
Have you, have you looked at any access to nine G?
Um, no, we really, we really haven't. We've pretty much stuck with, uh, you know, what was contemplated under an earlier plan, which was just the, the two entrances off of, right there off of nine, the Winslow and the existing.
Well, the only reason I ask is because for, the, the county did, county planning did a, a traffic or, you know, study in this area. And one of the things they were looking for was some kind of, you know, to get some more east-west connectivity.
Get the flow.
Was there an actual GEIS, I think they did, or?
I don't know.
There is certainly the old road that takes you out.
That would help draw from the eastern side, yeah.
I bet it would be nice if that, something like that.
I just had, uh-
That would be helpful if, if that could be pursued. I actually looked at this property about eight or nine years ago for a previous potential developer of the property and I remember considering that as part of that, right?
Uh, I don't know if you've looked at all the, you know, it doesn't look like you've put buildings on it or anything, but eventually this, you know, the trails, the rail spur ends here. CSX owns that portion now and it would be great to have something like the High Line or whatever to get connected down into-
We thought the same thing.
And et cetera.
We, we've left that open under-
It'd benefit the previous project that just presented as well and-
Right.
As well as Samaris Housing and everything all the way along, so.
And, and we potentially left that undeveloped under this concept plan to see what happens along the way for, 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 for just that reason.
That could be a great amenity to the project.
Peter, Peter, you had a question?
I have that.
Seventy acres open space, any of that included in the Brownfield?
Uh, yes. The, again, the entire, let's call it the northern part of the property from there up is the, what we could define as the northern space.
That'll be remediated?
Well, yeah, everything will be remediated. Absolutely will be remediated.
Uh, the next thing is, have you done an assessment of the in-ground utilities?
Um, there, there is, uh, again, there's massive amounts of data that George spends, uh, you know, his lifetime trying to pull together from the prior occupants here and the, the adjacent state facility, the facilities people there. George is working with some microfiche and some other data now with drawings of the buildings, the, the tunnels, the utilities. We've been on site multiple times with Central Hudson. A number of the utilities were recently disconnected. They've identified a water sewer, gas line, you know, a number of the utilities throughout the site. Unfortunately, a lot of them aren't necessarily on the as-built drawings and they're, we're discovering utilities here and there that weren't necessarily part of what we thought was programmed in there. But yes, there is a comprehensive plan underway to try to identify everything subsurface.
Uh, in addition to the actual identification, are you making any effort to determine what kind of condition that those underground lines are in?
We, we haven't yet, but we, we will eventually. And again, a, a lot of it will be from looking at an overlay of our plan to try to develop what, what, what if anything we can use or whether it's all abandoned in place or, or demolished.
If the underground utilities are deficient, the water lines and the sewer lines, would you consider it your responsibility to replace them or the, would that be the responsibility of the municipality?
You know, I think that's the part of the negotiation and the process along the way, just to see what, what, I'd be, I'd be lying if I said we weren't, we weren't looking to take advantage of whatever programs are available, whether it's at the local county, state, federal level. It is a project that has significant costs associated with it and anything we can do to assist with the, the economic vitality of it, we certainly would be in favor of.
When you say negotiate, who would you be negotiating with?
Who wants to volunteer?
Now, are you saying-
In all, in all seriousness, who, again, if that's an opportu, if that's not an option at all, then it's just not an option. If it's an option, you say, well, we can do X, Y, or Z, then it's something up for discussion in exchange for whatever. Maybe we're going to donate open space. Maybe we're going to create, uh, recs, recreational space. What, again, that's-
I just want to make sure, so in other words, you're saying, uh, trade open space for the town to replace the water and sewer lines?
Yeah, honestly, it's way too premature. It's nothing I've given any thought to and, and, and I, I'd be really remiss if I got into any kind of a negotiation at, at this table about that. It's, we, we haven't even thought about it.
That's more the town board purview.
One more thing, there's a church, is that still in use on the site?
It's not, it's not on the site. There is a, um-
It's toward the east.
Yeah.
It's on the state-owned property.
There's, there's three chapels.
Bring back the aerial for a minute. You can see it on this aerial, it's just off of our property. I think you can see it here.
Peter, there is three chapels that I'm familiar with. There is the Protestant, the Jewish, and the Catholic one, which is now owned by the Catholic Church, St. Peter's.
But there's, it has-
Which is not on that property.
Yeah, it's just off the property. George, it's off there, but you can just kind of, it's right, just off the page, right outside the gate of where our outbound is.
Thanks. Over by the power plant.
In fact, one of your town board members asked us last night if we'd be willing to meet with the, the pastor there to, you know, just to make sure that he was aware of what the development concept is and to incorporate any thinking that he may have as to how the flow of traffic and whether there's a, a connection to the road past the church is part of the process or not.
Have you talked to the fire department or the school board about the, the school, I don't know where they're going to go, probably up to Violet Avenue School? For children in the firehouses up there? And you're not talking about any connecting road going over that way?
We, we have met with, George actually met with the, the fire chief who was, happened to have been here last night as well. And we've had a, one or two meetings with him just preliminarily to just start to have, uh, again, incorporate his thinking into the programming of the project. School board, no. We haven't met with anybody from the school board.
Have you got a timeframe, some kind of a timeframe that you're looking at for various pieces of this?
In terms of the approval or the development?
Both things.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're at the point now where we're just about ready to embark on hopefully some demolition on the property for a couple of reasons. Some of these buildings are structurally unsound. We're talking to township staff about demolition permits and identify, we met with Chippewa recently regarding demolition, possible demolition. DEC has a demand for us to demolish buildings so that subsurface testing can be done. They're not interested in having us core through, they just want the buildings gone because they believe there's enough possible contamination there that they want to do significant testing. So we're going to work with the, the staff to work on some demolition permits and get that part of it going. Shortly thereafter, we hope to file an application and, uh, you know, begin the, the process in earnest to, to move toward an approval.
I think I'm hearing you talking about probably a year to get to the start of the application.
Or, or sooner.
After demo.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I think that's reasonable.
Nicholas, are you qualified for Startup New York? I'm not sure if you're familiar with that program that we have in New York State.
Is that the one that, George, is that the one you- Yeah, we thought we weren't qualified.
That's right next to it.
Startup New York?
Yeah.
Last question I had, are you going to do two bedroom or four bedroom?
Just for, for clarity, it's, it's so nice to see the, well, one, thank you for finally doing something with the site.
There are carols are wet.
Looking into that. It's too bad it didn't happen twenty years ago before, some of the buildings could have been salvaged. But just for clarity, um, the Quiet Cove site is colorized as well, so it just appears that that is part of your development even though it's not-
Along the, the green along the river.
The river, the riverside.
Oh, yeah, we just colored it for identification. No, that's obviously the park and it's, has nothing to do with our property.
Right. Like I said, just for clarity, it'd be nice to not have that colorized so people realize that, you know, this is the limits of our-
Okay, good comment.
You'd like that.
Right, if it's available, we're interested.
Well, you know, make the county an offer, you never know.
You never know, right?
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I think just, just move, move along, I mean.
Were any of the buildings stabilized though? I mean, we heard a lot about that in the past, that some of the former owners were going to stabilize-
A few years ago, I think they were.
Yeah.
I think it just-
I think one was, it burned.
Yeah. Honestly, from what we've seen, it, it was a Band-Aid at best that was done. I mean, I don't, we haven't found any significant structural, uh, you know, bolstering of buildings, even the roofs. I mean, unfortunately, at, at the, at an early stage, we even went in with some of the roofs of buildings that we thought, I mean, they have gigantic holes in them and, and the buildings in the back that were unique that we thought we'd save for some type of recreation.
Shops.
We've, we've been up there putting, you know, just putting as much of a Band-Aid as we could on them to prevent the cascading of water and further degradation of the substructures. But most of these buildings, the floors are just pancaked inside because they're so rotted that they just collapsed. It's a shell of a building, there's the brick on the outside, but there's virtually nothing left on the inside.
I thought Chazen also had started some kind of a, a survey of the underground utilities as well.
They did.
Okay.
They did. And, and there are drawings and, and, again, George spends a lot of time, you can imagine the, the level of detail that's out there from a hundred years of operating here. There's, there's a lot of drawings, a lot of data, a lot of information and we're trying to collect as much of it as we can along the way to try to familiarize ourself with the history.
I know there was changes below that were never documented.
You know, it's, it's unfortunate that there really is nothing left there, that there's, there's barely any unique features of buildings left because they've been, the, the scrappers have been there and have just destroyed what was anything of any real, even architectural significance, is either rotted or been torn off the buildings.
It's a shame.
Could you say maybe-
Plants, species and animals and everything else involved. Has a study going to go start on that?
All of those, all of those studies, everything from, you know, all the visual studies, species, all of those, and you'll see that a number of those, those professionals have already been retained, so all of those things will be done. By the way, the environmental here is not, is not astronomical on the property. It's not like it's a superfund site. I mean, there's typical environmental that had to, that was, you know, in conjunction with operations here from, there may be some PCBs, which is not the end of the world. It's fairly hazardous material, but it's not the worst thing that there is. But most of it is, we think is oil and, you know, some related type contamination from automobile work mechanic shops and other things that were on the site.
And the asbestos.
And the asbestos.
Could you speak a little bit to your thinking in terms of concept planning about access to and around the site and, and are you considering alternatives depending on the market conditions, phase development, the location of residential, either for getting around the site, uh, because, or alternatives to, you know, maintaining two access points for the entire development to Route nine as the limit of access?
Eric, there are, there are discussions underway for that, that's kind of the next step, because we haven't done a phasing plan yet and it will have, we will have to look at that for circulation, road closure, and, and section by section. We started to lay this out, George, if you can point to that, this one area here, for instance.
This area here.
Yeah. We see these things start to be able to operate by themselves, so a, a community of fifty or sixty or seventy-five units, whatever it might be, that's a little bit of a radius road or a cul-de-sac or whatever that functions as a spur off of a main road. So that we see putting in, kind of defining the, the main road and, and actually installing that under the first phase. So that that loop road, whatever it may be, that's, we clearly define, so that you have full circulation for safety, fire, all of those kinds of issues. And then start to build the, off that spine road, the, the little sections, different residential areas.
Well, thank you. I think we, we look forward to your coming back as soon as you got something, you know, ready to go. And if you need, uh, at any point, a special meeting, you know, if you've got some deadlines you need to meet or whatever, we're certainly here to, to accommodate that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments and your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, is Canterbury, Canterbury here?
What's that?
Canterbury Plaza here?
Um, yeah, they're here.
They're here?
Yeah.
Oh, we're going to, all right, let's do River Point. Uh, River Point. Residential and West Park Professional Buildings Site Plan, Aquatic Resource Permit, Plan, Public Hearing and Lot Line Revision Review Regarding Proposed Development Plan Amended to Include A Single Seven-Story Building Containing Eighty-Five Age-Restricted Dwelling Units, Thirty-One Point, Thirty-One Thousand Five Hundred Thirty-Four Square Feet Medical Office, um, and plus or minus Thirteen Thousand Nine Hundred Seventy-Six Square Feet of Pharmacy or Medical Service Uses. Two Oh Five Five South Road, Eighty-Three Old Post, Road Zoned R, Office Research With Senior Housing Overlay, SHOD Designation, Seven Point One Four Acres. Secret Negative Deck, uh, for Non-Listed Action On File, WA Group Nine LLC Owners To Be Deferred. So I'll, I'll make a motion, we defer this to the June seventeenth, two thou, or-
Actually-
July?
It's not public hearings.
I know, but-
Just defer it.
Just defer it?
Just defer it, yeah. Just defer it, yeah.
I mean, at what point do you defer it, or at what point do we just say, we table it?
Yeah, I mean, although it just keeps coming back until it all dependent upon. To you.
All right, well, well.
But they have to make it out.
What if I just move the planning board to defer action?
Okay, fine, let's do that. Yeah.
Could we make a motion with the planning board defer action on the project River Point Residential and West Park Professional Buildings until after town board action on the amended S H O D designation and applicant submittal responding to comments from the March 20th planning board meeting. Second.
Okay, I guess that makes sense. You know what, either you're gonna be on the, yeah. Okay, if I had my druthers, I'd table it. At any rate, is there a motion, we have a second?
Yep.
The planning board recommends the planning, department, the planning board would defer, recommends we defer action on the project until after the town board action on an amended S H O D designation and an applicant submittal responding to the comments of the March 20th, 2014 planning board meeting. And call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Canterbury Plaza, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, Canterbury Plaza Enterprise Car Rental Site Plan Review For An, Of An Amended Plan To Permit A Motor Vehicle Rental Facility Use. Six Ninety-Six Duchess Turnpike Zoned B N Neighborhood Business, Four Point Two Acres Unlisted Action Gene W Patrick Owner.
Hi there, good evening, Damian Patrick on behalf of Canterbury Plaza Property Manager and Leasing Agent, and I'm here with Mr. Mazzarelli, the architect on the job site.
It's here somewhere.
So, there is a, this is an existing building, a Duchess Turnpike. The previous space was occupied by a chiropractic office. We are currently looking to rent out thirty-one hundred fifty square feet plus or minus two enterprise car rental. With that application, they are gonna provide a little vehicle prep area, and we also have to provide some thirty reserved parking spaces and what we call twenty non-exclusive spaces, which we can kind of, if they need them, they utilize them, they don't need them, you know, we'll have them for the plaza. The plaza currently is approximately thirty-six thousand three hundred eighty square feet in that B N district. We have a parking requirement, I believe, of four per thousand. So there's about a hundred forty-six spaces that are required, and we have in excess of three hundred. The client will be restriping that plaza, I'm not quite sure if you guys actually took a look out there, took a drive by there, but we're gonna be restriping that. And, and with that, that's basically what we're here for.
Thank you.
Eric?
Sure.
Uh, the, this is a late arriving application in part because the motor vehicle rental use which is proposed for the site is, is not a permitted use in the B N district. They applied for and received a, a use variance from the zoning board of appeals just this last Monday, May 12th, and that plan came forward to you for required site plan review that is required as a, with that use variance. The zoning board did specify that the car, that the, the only vehicle types that would be permitted for rental and parking with this use would be passenger vehicles, sport utility vehicles, pickup trucks and cargo vans, and that servicing of vehicles on the site would not be permitted. So it's coming to you with those restrictions in place to be incorporated into site plan use to go that way. Basically, they're proposing almost no physical changes on the site other than the designation of parking spaces. It's proposed, the, the use is essentially an office use within existing tenant space in the building. They're proposing to alter some of the interior for use as a prep area, obviously not to include the, the servicing. And they're proposing to eliminate two spaces for that purpose and install a garage-type door, which I think is, is in there for elevations if you, if you move on to architectural review. On that basis, the plaza is presently at somewhere around 50% occupancy. We don't, we don't see any, any additional demands for parking appear to, parking or traffic or water and sewer appear to be well within the capacity of the, of the existing site as if it, if it were fully developed, so we have no concern with regard to those things. Furthermore, it would be subject to further review by water and sewer departments to ensure that if there are any improvements necessary for the use, they can be accommodated. On that basis, we're recommending that the board proceed with, waive the site plan public hearing and approve the site plan for the project subject to staff going over the plans with the applicant and making sure it covers all the informational requirements.
All right, thank you. Joe, any comments on this?
No, actually, we didn't, we didn't get this for review.
Okay.
Best growth project.
The only, from, thing from an engineering point of view might be something to do with the way they're gonna hand wash the cars inside the facility, that's the only thing they're gonna be allowed to do.
Yeah, that, yeah, and we'll, we'll have this, we didn't have time to get review comments back from the various town departments, but preliminary review with the zoning board suggests that there, we don't see any significant issues for it, but we are going to proceed with review by other town departments.
All right, I, okay, that's fine, I think, I mean, it's, sure, I got this space, it'd be nice to have a tenant there, for sure. Marvin, any comments, we'll start with you.
No.
Ed?
No.
Rich? Carl?
I think, I mean, I think that outside of buildings has come along nicely, but is that all completed now?
Yes, sir.
Extra, yeah.
Thanks, good. Peter?
Just how will the spaces be designated?
I'm sorry?
The parking spaces for these cars will be designated, how are you gonna do that?
We have a preliminary layout here on this map that shows.
Yeah, I see, I see, I have that.
Are they gonna, are they gonna have an E on the ground or something?
Yeah, the green, the green spots, they'll say an E will be reserved for enterprise parking, and then the blue spaces are additional overflow if they require it. From our perspective and from enterprise perspective is, the less cars there, the more money they're making, so they tend to want to not have a lot of cars there, otherwise they are not making any money, so.
The spaces will be marked?
Yes.
Yes, payment.
Okay. Thank you, Joe?
No, no comment. I think it's, I think it's a good use. And I, and I agree with what they said, they did a nice job with the building, it looks really good, and I think that, I mean, get another tenant in there, maybe draw some more tenants, and, you know, it'd be nice to see it full.
That's what we're hoping for.
That's what I hope is right.
I move that the planning board waive site plan public hearing for.
We moved in second, we waived the site plan public hearing for this project, call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board declare that the project is an unlisted action and that the board intends to conduct an uncoordinated review of this action pursuant to Secur Six Seventeen Point Six Sub B Sub Four.
We moved in second that the planning board declare that the project is an unlisted action, that the board intends to conduct an uncoordinated review of this action pursuant to Secur Section Six Seventeen Point Six Sub B Sub Four. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the Canterbury Plaza Enter Car Enterprise Car Rental Site Plan Application would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration dated May 15, 2014, prepared by the planning department.
We moved in second that the planning board determine that the Canterbury, Canterbury Plaza Enterprise Car Rental Site Plan Application would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and that no environmental, environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration dated May 15, 2014, prepared by the planning department. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Canterbury Plaza Enterprise Car Rental Project subject to the following, one through thirteen.
We moved in second that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval, review approval for the Canterbury Plaza Enterprise Car Rental Project subject to the following, one through thirteen. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Architectural review, do we, do you have anything with you, or?
We do have, well, we have something.
We've already had a, we've already had a.
Base, base the garage door?
With regard to the exterior facade, there's, there's very minimal work, we're proposing to add twelve foot wide by ten foot high. Is that me? Overhead door, and it's basically gonna just blend in, it's gonna match that EIF, Ephis color. If you go by there now, there's a man door that currently kind of does the same type of thing, it's painted the same color and it kind of goes away, that's what, that's what our intention is.
And that's in the rear of the building?
To the side, to the east side.
East side, yes.
Facing Janet Drive.
Right.
So we kind of superimpose it on there in that.
Carlo, is, is the brown portion above the door Ephis or something else?
Nope, that's Ephis. We tried, we tried, the color's gonna match, the computer didn't do too good.
The awning over the door, the, over the doorway, is that an awning or a structure?
No, that's just, it's in a different plane, it's existing.
It's existing.
The only thing new is gonna be cut out for the overhead door, and that, that, that colors are supposed to kind of blend, but like, you know, the guy in the office didn't do a good job.
I move that we grant architectural review based upon the discussion and the picture presented and the fact it'll match the, the existing or the currently planned.
Second.
Colors and so forth.
Moved in second that we accept the architecture as presented, and the colors will blend in with the building, not what was on the drawing because the color printer isn't so hot.
Didn't do too good job, okay.
Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. You guys had a good week.
Thank you very much.
Good, work with staff and, you know, and then once we get all the sign-offs and everything done, you can get your building permits.
Thank you very much.
It could take six, seven years, but, you know.
We know those guys, they're not bad, come on.
I'm kidding.
Thank you.
We'll work, we'll work with you to make it happen as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
They're obviously working in a very cramped space today over there on Main Street.
Oh, yeah, they're anxious to move.
I don't blame them. Okay, other business, Dunkin' Donuts, Main Street Edition Parking Edition. It really does, I agree with you, okay. Okay, Dunkin' Donuts, seven sixty-seven Main Street Parking Edition Time Extension For An Approved Site Plan To Transform Adjacent Lots Into Overflow Parking For An Existing Dunkin' Donuts. Seven sixty-four Main Street Zoned A T C Arlington Town Center, point six one acres, unlisted action, C R Repackipsy LLC Owner. Applicant Requested Ninety-Day Time Extension Of June, let's see, wait, wait, wait. All right, the planning board recommends, the planning, yeah, I'm going, I'm ahead of myself here, the planning board recommends, the planning department recommends, the planning board grant a ninety-day time extension of conditional site plan approval from June twentieth, 2014, forward to September eighteenth, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Dunkin' Donuts, okay. Red Oaks Mill Plaza Amendment Site Plan Time Extension Of An Approved Site Plan For Proposed Improvements To Site Drainage, Access, Circulation And Parking, Landscaping And Trash Room Storage. Forty-three Vassar Road Zoned Red Oaks Mill Neighborhood Services Business, R O M N S C, X Y Z. Four point nine acres, Type Two Action, R J L Red Oaks Mill Plaza LLC Owner.
I move that the planning board grant a ninety-day.
Discussion.
Time exten, what's, oh, you can have a discussion.
I'd like to see something other than ninety days, I'd like to see it sooner.
Uh, just for the board's information, that we're scheduling, we're seeking the schedule of pre-construction, we, with, meeting with them next week. They're anxious to begin. It's a technicality, their plan will, would expire, I think, either tonight if the board didn't grant the extension.
So do we do thirty or sixty day?
You could, you could do, it's up to you, you could do less if you choose to do so, we just typically do ninety because that's what the code provides for.
There's, there's some safety aspects with the landscaping, that you, you do not have visibility if you're trying to pull out of there and go, what would that would be, towards Route Nine, southbound.
They've provided for low landscaping and they've shown sightlines and.
I'd really like to see that get going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Honestly, if you wanna do a thirty or a sixty, that's fine, I'd, we've been doing ninety, which is standard, but if you want to shorten up.
You do thirty?
Whatever, thirty's fine.
Sure.
I move that.
Here, forty-five?
I move that the planning board grant a thirty-day time extension, the conditional site plan approval from May sixteenth, 2014.
You could just say forward, just say forward.
Just say forward.
Forward.
Forward sixty to thirty days.
Well, it'd be June.
Are you calculating?
June fifteenth.
It's okay.
Second.
It's been second that we grant a thirty-day time extension. Call a question?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Okay. Town Board Referral Of Amendment To The Zoning Map Section Two Ten Dash Eleven For Ten Through Fourteen Tucker Drive. Recommendations To Town Board Regarding A Proposed Zoning Map Amendment To Tax Parcel Number Located At Ten Dash Fourteen Tucker Drive From Neighborhood Business B N District To Heavy Industry I H District.
You may recall some months ago, the town board had amended the zoning for many parcels on Tucker Drive from neighborhood business to shopping center. This was a piece that was part of that original neighborhood business zoning cluster that it had been our intention to convert it to heavy industrial, there's a heavy industrial zone to the north. The, the use of the property is as warehouse and storage, you would see more properly to zone it for what it's being used for, which is heavy industrial. At the time that we did the shopping center zoning for the other parcels, this one was forgotten, so we're playing a little bit of catch-up. So the recommendation is to, to, to ask the planning board to issue a positive recommendation to town board to extend the heavy industrial zone to include this last little piece.
Discussion?
I move that the planning board convey positive recommendation to the town board regarding the adoption of the proposed amendment.
Second.
We moved in second that the planning board convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding adoption of the proposed amendment regarding D three, the ten to fourteen Tucker Drive. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. D four, Town Board Referral Of Zoning Amendments Chapter, Sections Two Ten Dash Seventy-Four And Two Ten Dash Nine Regarding Home Occupations. Recommendation To The Town Board Regarding Proposed Amendments To The Definition And Regulation Of Home Occupations.
The home occupation amendment has been kicking around for a couple of years, some of the board's members may recall that, I think, ten or eleven, we had a, a similar referral over from the town board. The planning board made recommendations for some changes, they went back to the town board, they kind of kicked around, and there were some disagreements about, not the planning board's changes, but about some other aspects of the home occupation amendments, so it was simply tabled and nothing else was done. It, it is back before you, essentially in the form that, that captures the, the planning board's original recommendations from a couple of years ago. There are some additional changes that the planning, or the town board had, had made to it, but the idea here is, right now, every home occupation, no matter how minor, de minimis, it may be, has to come before the zoning board and is subject to a full public hearing and a special permit process. We have had occasion where we have had people who are, they're solo operators, they don't have employees, they don't have, you know, much, very much going on, they're gonna use a small section of their house, and, you know, they're, they've been subject to this sort of full-blown specialty use permit process. What this does is to establish sort of a tiered approach, that if they meet the de minimis standards, they register their business with SARA, and they can, they're, they're permission to, to go forward. If they don't, they get kicked into the second tier, and then they are, are subject to the full-blown specialty permit and public hearing requirements. And that was the basis for the last referral that you had made a couple of years ago, and that is the basis for the, the current amendment.
Sounds good to me.
Discussion?
I have a couple of comments. One is, I don't know if this is significant or not, I, I believe the legal notice of public hearing is deficient.
Okay, this is something, you saw, so, I, I'm looking at your email, this is something you saw in the paper, the actual published notice?
It's the only copy that we have, and I have two copies and they're both consistent. Sight the public hearing as a redesignation of a specific parcel number, which is ten to fourteen Tucker Drive.
Okay, something, yeah, okay, okay, I'll take that up with the clerk. Okay.
So you, you may have to re-publish the.
Yeah.
Legal notice of public hearing, or reset the date for the public hearing, because the notice, clearly, if this is a verbatim notice, it's deficient.
But there's time to re-advertise before the June fourth date, yeah, no, I, thank you, so, yeah.
So we'll have to re-advertise prior to the town board taking this up?
Yeah, but we, we require ten days and there's plenty of time to do that.
But it's okay for us to do.
If it's taken care of, right, thank you.
I had a question on you, just reading you, no activities, just a question, no outdoor displays or, or outdoor storage. And I, I know a relative who has a business that, not in our town, but sells, makes stuff for craft fair and they store a lot of materials in their shed outside, is that something that would be prohibited then, or? Because it says the principles.
Yeah, if they're, honestly, we're not, we're not going into sheds looking to see what they've got stored, it's the, it's the out, if it's.
Just the way it's.
Not inside a structure, in other words, the outdoor display would be piled against the house or some, you know, we just don't wanna see that.
Okay, yeah, that's just the way it was worded, it says only within the principal structure, that's why I wouldn't.
Right.
Know if that could be amended to include sheds and.
Well, what if they got a still on the back?
That's a whole nother set of problems.
Now you're getting into the federal, state.
Ed?
I was curious if, if there's any thought to any kind of, on these special permit things, if there's anything that would allow us to do inspections, once these things have been set up, so that all of a sudden it doesn't grow from room A to.
Yeah, we, we don't, yeah, we don't have the manpower to do that, to be honest.
Yeah.
What we do is reply, respond to specific complaints. But one of the, one of the points of discussion and one of the reasons that, one of the, one of the, not the reason, one of the reasons that this had been previously tabled was, there was a discussion about, should it be renewed, you know, every couple of years, of years, which again, we just don't have the manpower to track this.
I know that.
Yeah, so, but we do respond to complaints, and if it's obvious that they, you know, let's say a, a business that had previously qualified under the first tier and was registered is now essentially outgrown their confines, and it's obvious that they're no longer a de minimis type of use, then SARAH will issue, in order to remedy, require them to come in and receive a full special permit approval.
One other thing, under the general criteria, Section B, it says the following uses are specifically prohibited as home occupation, and they list retail sales. Under specific criteria, C, A shall be one of the following uses that are permitted includes florist, and I don't know how other, how you could define florist as other than a retail business.
You could be a florist and not conduct onsite sales, in other words, you're doing, you're in the florist business, and what you do is you, you do your florist thing, you put together things, and you're taking them off-site for sale.
I'm just wondering if maybe that should be more specific, florist, you know, not conducting in-house sales.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at it.
Thank you, Peter.
Could you just be putting together something?
That's exactly where I was.
So if they're making arrangements and delivering, and that's.
Yeah.
Because their orders are all by phone or internet.
Kind of retail operation when you have people showing up, handing you cash, and walking away.
Right.
You know, there was sort of a cash and carry.
Like the guys that fix cars.
Right.
Again, this is the purview of the Town Board, but, you know, neighbors are always the best source for information as to what goes on in their neighborhood, I mean, they're there every day. That's why the process, I mean, I've been through the special use permit process, and it really was, was nothing, you know, just had to fill out a short form, appeared at the meeting, the neighbors show up or not, and that's pretty much the end of it. And I just don't want the zoning administrator to be put at a disadvantage unless she's actually going to do a site visit. I mean, it's not clear here whether or not that's going to occur.
She will, she will. I mean, in order to, in order to accept the registration of a business, she conducts an investigation, she puts her feet on the ground, she goes out and takes a look, and that's, yeah.
We're fortunate to have probably the best zoning administrator in the Hudson Valley, so, I mean, I know that she would do that, I mean, she's terrific.
What happens when she retires and moves on?
Yeah, exactly, I mean, since we're, we're planning, you know, what's going to happen if the next person, you know, who succeeds her, and I hope that doesn't happen for a long time, is not as diligent?
I hope that we get another zoning administrator.
Yeah.
So he's not allowed to leave?
Figured you would.
That's exactly the point that I was confused about as well, because I thought it was included retail sales.
I'm sorry?
The florist business, I thought it also included retail sales.
No, it would not, it would not.
Probably big business, putting stuff together, bring to a wedding reception or that kind of thing.
Okay. And you're going to talk to the clerk about.
See this in the neighborhood already.
Yeah.
I move that the Planning Board convey positive recommendation to the Town Board regarding the adoption of the proposed amendment with the qualification with the appropriate corrections noted with the board.
Okay, we moved in second that the Planning Board convey a positive recommendation to the Town Board regarding adoption of the proposed amendment concerning home occupations, and that the, the public notice be corrected accordingly. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries seven zero. And last but not least.
I got your attention, last but not least.
Not yet.
Okay, can we sign now?
Town Board Referral of Zoning Amendment to Chapter, Section 210-125, signs permitted in a BSC district, recommendation to Town Board regarding a proposed zoning amendment to the regulation of signs in the BSC district.
Okay, this one is actually really about the Poughkeepsie Plaza. The plaza was originally an open-air plaza, you may recall, looked a lot like the Hudson Plaza on the opposite side, where all of the merchants had a sidewalk, and their storefronts faced the, faced the parking lot. It was enclosed, 70s, early 80s. So what happened then is that you now have the merchants who previously had their storefronts facing the parking lot now face the merchants on the other side of the hallway, and those merchants have wall frontage on the parking lot. What's been happening is, under the current code, and this has been going on for a long time, anytime you have a new sign for a new tenant for the inside space, they have to come in to get a variance to put it on a wall that's not part of their demised and leased area. This will fix it, and this was specifically actually SARAH's recommendation, because it, you know, they're being granted, that's kind of insane to have to ask in the first place, but it's also specifically about the Poughkeepsie Plaza, it's that kind of a unique setup.
Discussion?
Sounds like a good idea.
So they're going to start moving all the signs around and put them in the right places? Okay, that's up to them.
Any other discussion?
No.
I move that the Planning Board convey a positive recommendation to the Town Board regarding the adoption of the proposed amendment.
We moved in second that we convey a positive recommendation to the Town Board regarding adoption of the proposed amendment concerning the signage permitted in the BSCs. Call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries seven zero.
Anyone else?
Any other business that we need to.
Yeah, just a question for Neil, how did the Town Board perceive comments from Hudson Heritage about the project?
It was, it was, well, I think you probably had a more detailed discussion about some of the aspects of the site plan than, than the, than the Town Board did. There were some comments questioning the upper density of 750, as to whether or not that's actually appropriate for a full build-out, and that's something that'll have to be discussed, and, you know, you'll have to sort of wash out as part of the, the approval process. There were some, some comments about, you know, potential tenants in the commercial space, but overall, it was just, you know, they're kind of thinking about it, sort of thing.
Positive, because we don't want to scare these people.
Every, I think everybody recognizes something needs to happen, you know, we're desperate to have something happen, and the question amongst the various members is, what's the right thing, and that's one of the things that we're going to have to figure out.
Yeah, well, originally.
Why don't we adjourn?
We had discussion on whether the phasing, whether the, the commercial goes first and then the housing, or does partial, or does the housing, and then, we were always afraid that they would build the housing and not the commercial.
Well, actually, yeah.
Commercial instead of the housing.
Here was the commercial, they, they put a big box, and they walk away, and the rest is just left to sort of rot, to ruin. This group is taking a very different approach, you know, they, they've, from the standpoint of, the, the buildings that need to come down will come down probably before they even make application, and, and they can do that, and that's part of what we're, what we're, you know, discussing with them. I, I do think that, you know, this question of, you know, sort of chicken and egg, you know, and how do we make sure that we get it all built, that, again, that's something we're going to have to figure out. But if you look at our current code, the way that it's set up to incentivize getting to the 750 units is that they've got to do a certain amount of commercial, then they get a little bit of residential, more commercial to residential, and, you know, that they're going to be asking for some amendments to that, to, to allow them to do some different things. Again, it's going to have to be kind of worked out.
I didn't see much parking now on the, I mean, I know it's.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to need to get into the whole site plan thing anyway, this is probably a really premature discussion.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I, I think it was, it was, it was a good discussion, it was a cordial discussion at the Town Board level.
Okay.
I move that we terminate the meeting.
We moved in second, we terminate the meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.